Okay, good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting study session for the agenda item around Proposition 64, the implementation of recreational marijuana.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we have a report for you on the city's outreach effort to the community which the council directed that we undertake in order to take the pulse of the community around the implementation of Proposition 64, the Adult Recreational Use of Marijuana Act. And so, tonight, we would like to present to you the findings from each of the meetings that were held in March this year to solicit input. We've invited our consultants from Muni Services to be here tonight. Jeff Colan and Laurie Burkamp, who were both present at all of the sessions that we scheduled here in Daly City in March. And they provided the presentation to the community and were available to respond to questions, as well as solicited input by way of a polling kind of survey that was done at each of the meetings on several different topics related to preferences around the implementation of Prop 64. And so with that, what we'd like to do tonight is, I'm going to ask Jeff, or are you going to take the lead, ask Jeff Colan to come up. I've provided you with a copy of his PowerPoint presentation, so you can follow along and make notes. Jeff's going to go through what occurred in those meetings and what we learned from those meetings. And then, I've asked him to outline what the next steps would be in order to frame for you the kind of direction that we need from you in order to move forward with any kind of legislative action that may be necessary if that's the direction that you give to us. And we also will be talking about the relative timelines related to any kind of action that might be required this year if the council wanted to proceed moving forward. There will not be action tonight, but we would take whatever direction that you give to us. And then, we would come back in June with the necessary follow-up and lay out the various actions that would be required to move ahead if that's what the council chooses to do, either to implement Proposition 64, or if the council elected to move in the direction of banning the implementation of Prop 64 here in Daly City, then we would tell you what is necessary in order for that to occur. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, City Manager Martel. Mayor and City Council members, it's a pleasure to be back with you this evening and provide some updates on what we've been up to for the last couple of months here.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Will you be standing all this time?
I can't.
I'm just wondering, would he be more comfortable if he sat at the table?
Sure.
Right?
Thank you.
Because I guess...
Thank you.
Okay. Make sure your mic is on there.
So again, thank you for inviting us back again. As City Manager Martel mentioned, during the month of March, we conducted three separate community meetings. The first on March 5th at the War Memorial Activity Room. We had about 15 individuals, not including staff and consultants, attend that meeting and get the PowerPoint overview on the commercial cannabis industry. You know, we went through a number of informational items and then held a voting or tabulation exercise where we put a grid up on the wall. And it had both the medicinal and the adult-use business categories listed, and then allowed the participants to vote whether they strongly opposed, opposed, were neutral, or whether they supported or strongly supported a particular type of business. We also allowed them to put stickers on the wall on those to indicate their votes and to write comments on those. The second meeting was on March 13th. That was held at the Gallard Park Clubhouse. We had about 15 members, again, of the public attend that meeting. And the final one was held on March 31st at the Bay Shore Community Center Gymnasium. Big room, only seven members of the public attended. So, I think, you know, this, the attendance was fine. I think the city did a great job of publicizing the meetings, as well as using social media to make sure that members of the public knew that they were going to be conducted and that the information was going to be available. And it may be an indication that, you know, there wasn't that much concern from the community about cannabis industries in the community, or it just may have been that they had other things to do on those days. As part of those workshops, we went over the history of commercial cannabis in California. We talked about the different types of state and local administrative structures and what we recommended in the way of administrative structures and processes. We showed the state license categories and fees. We talked about the state regulations that are being developed in the various departments that were part of those, that regulatory structure. We went over banking and the cash nature of the industry, and that one of the big challenges that the industry faces and the communities face that host the industry is that most of the businesses transacted by cash because of federal restrictions on banks doing business with the cannabis industry. We worked with the city's planning department to produce a map that showed the state 600-foot radius around elementary schools and setbacks, as well as we discussed a number of options for additional buffer zones around various types of facilities and different sizes of buffer zones in addition to the 600 feet.
On page seven of the handout that you have, you have a copy of the map that we use, so that gives you a sense of what Jeff is referring to.
Yeah, and we'll show that to you in just a minute up on the screen as well. We then took a look at what surrounding jurisdictions we're doing in the way of permitting or not permitting various types of the cannabis industry in the surrounding region within your county. And we talked about the various types of industries within the cannabis business models. We went through cultivation. We talked about manufacturing. We talked about dispensaries or retail sales. We talked about laboratories and testing, and gave some photo examples of what those facilities look like, so that members of the public who had not had an opportunity to visit one of those types of facilities or see one in operation could get an idea of the sizes and the appearance from both the exterior and the interior of those types of businesses. We also gave an overview of the state and local taxes, tax structure. And remember that the state has a sales and use tax that applies to cannabis, as well as a number of taxable products throughout the state. Prop 64 also implemented an excise tax on cannabis, 15%, as well as cultivation taxes based on the weight of the flower, or the leaf, or the freshly harvested product that is being taxed. And then, we spent some time talking about what are some of the city resources that may be required to regulate the industry, to monitor and collect the tax revenues, to put together the types of prevention and education programs that the community may have a desire to see if a cannabis industry is hosted in Daly City. After that presentation, we opened it up for questions and comments. And this slide just shows some, I think, representative questions and comments that we heard during those three public meetings. Certainly, there were a number of comments that said residents should have more input than non-residents, and wait as we categorize those comments and their votes. And so, you'll see a little bit later on, the chart that we compiled does indicate resident and non-resident votes. There were a few people who had very strong feelings about cannabis, had either friends or family that started consuming cannabis, and they felt that it led to the use of stronger drugs. And they were very vocal about those feelings. Others were concerned about inhaling second-hand smoke or odors from businesses or individuals who were smoking cannabis. We heard concern about efforts to keep cannabis out of the hands of kids and young adults. And this is something, of course, that's prohibited by law. It's not permitted under Prop 64. It's not even permitted within the city to smoke tobacco. And so, we already have regulations in place in the city to prohibit smoking of all kinds of products within the city and public spaces. Others felt that medicinal was different than adult use or recreational. They saw the need and seemed to support the need more strongly for medicinal rather than adult use. There were concerns about odors produced by cultivation, and were there systems available that could filter the air so that those odors could not be smelled from outside the facility? We explained that yes, that was the case. There were filtration systems that are available that could control those odors. Others asked, will dispensaries result in increased crime? We have not seen evidence, in our experience, where dispensaries resulted in increased crime. We cited those references. We did also point out that there are some crime trends related to the industry, particular with the cash nature of the industry. And so, there have been reports of robberies, follow-home burglaries and robberies, primarily associated with the cash produced by the industry. Lots of questions about how much revenue would be produced. And we provided a couple of examples from jurisdictions in California that had already permitted various types of cannabis businesses. And frankly, the range is very wide. And so, it really depends on your geographic location, the geographic location of the businesses that are permitted and develop, the size of those businesses, how competitive they are with businesses in surrounding jurisdictions, to determine actually how much revenue will be produced. Others asked about, will the city be considering an equity process, and will they commission a report? And we talked about this during the presentation, that in many communities, federal drug enforcement focused, I think more heavily, on communities that had diverse populations and low income. And now that the cannabis industry is legal, should we have a program in place that would allow those same individuals, in many cases, to enter into legalized businesses where they may not have the financial resources to do so now? Questions about what were the next steps in the process? We explained that these were informational public meetings, that we were out, not advocating for or against cannabis industries. We were collecting information and community sentiment. We're going to bring back that to the city council, and that we're hopeful that at that point, the city council would be ready to give some direction. And that could include continuing on with a ban on all cannabis industries in the community. It could involve selecting one or more cannabis industries, either medicinal, or adult use, or both. It could involve allowing deliveries only into the community. And so, we went over all of those range of decisions that could take place. Also, there were some in the audience, I think, that had an interest in starting businesses themselves, that asked, why in the heck is it taking so long for the city to make a decision on this stuff? And as a former government official, I understand that frustration. It takes us some time to make decisions. And they weren't frustrated necessarily with Daly City alone. They felt that this was a trend that they were seeing throughout San Mateo County, with both the county and local governments within the county. Others asked, would they have to be a Daly City resident to apply for a license? And we responded that we don't know yet. We haven't heard anything from the council about an interest in restricting it to residents, and that in most communities, that is not a policy that is applied. How many licenses will be issued for dispensaries? Again, we don't know yet. That's a decision that'll take place later in the process. And can cannabis be consumed in a non-licensed business? No.
So, are they thinking of like a cannabis bar or something? I can't even imagine what they're thinking of.
I'm not sure what that exact question or comment was about.
Like a liquor store, or I mean, a bar or a restaurant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did the rules and regulations about the banking of, for cannabis operators, has that been changed? Has there been any movement on that?
There has not been any substantial movement. We know that there are efforts and discussions underway at the state level to try to find a solution. I haven't heard of any resolution to those yet. One thing I would say is that I think some of the fears about increased federal enforcement have been reduced. Both President Trump and Attorney General Sessions have indicated that that is not a priority currently. And so, I think that has reduced some of the apprehension about that aspect of federal enforcement. Okay, the next slide, which is up on the screen already, is the vote tabulation. And as I described earlier, this is a replication of the charts we had up on the wall. On the left-hand column, we list the categories of the various types of businesses, both medicinal and adult use, so cultivation, manufacturing, testing, dispensaries, and delivery only. And then, we, across the top, list the various categories of support, or lack thereof. An R indicates a resident vote, an NR, a non-resident vote. And as you can see, I think the support and strongly support categories, just across the board, outnumbered the strongly opposed or opposed voting categories. In some cases, as much as four or five to one.
Yeah, and even if you look at just the resident votes, if you're forgetting the non-residents, it's still, yeah, more than two to one. Some places, three.
Did you break that down into the age groups of the people who were voting?
No, we did not. We didn't ask for age. The only thing we asked for was resident or non-resident status.
By guess, by guess, the majority of people that were in attendance at each of the meetings were probably under the age of 40, just by guessing. There were a couple that were older, but the majority, I would say, were probably between the ages of 20 to 40.
And just by memory, I think, the strongly opposed category was made up of older residents, and in some occasions, residents with young children. Okay, so that's the summary of the workshop process and the input that we received. This next slide gets to the hard part. This represents some of the decisions that are facing you as a city council in helping us and your community decide what's appropriate for Daly City. And so, across the top are the categories of the various types of cannabis businesses. And we haven't broken these out yet. Well, the first question is, is it an authorized business or not? And so, in its simplest form, that's a yes or no answer. Then, the next step is, okay, let's take delivery. If delivery is yes, that's an authorized business. Is it authorized for both medical and recreation, or just one? And then, the next question is, okay, so we've determined that delivery is okay. Maybe it's for medicinal only. Does it require available property in the city, and is that available? And then, finally, is a question more for, I think, the council is, do you feel that there's community support for that type of business that's strong enough for you to move forward with an ordinance permitting that? And later on, we'll talk about some of the further steps in terms of administration and fee collection and revenue production. So, let me pause here for a moment and see if there's any questions about this step in the process.
Yes, a few. Can you go back one slide, please, to the chart of the results? Under testing, what does that entail? Because there was a big response there that they strongly support testing. Testing and what? You can go in and try it, or?
No, this is a, this is a category of a cannabis industry that would be, in effect, a laboratory or testing facility where small samples of the product would be brought in.
Got it. You made mention about the various taxes. This is on another question.
Yes.
Sales tax, excise tax. What's the minimum amount of taxes if somebody wanted to open up a business that they would have to, the minimum amount that they would have to pay?
So, they would have to pay the state sales and use tax?
Right, which is about what percent?
It's about seven and three-quarters percent. The only exception is if they have a state-issued medical cannabis card, and then they're exempt from that as a consumer.
All right. Oh, no, the proprietor.
Okay.
How much?
So, the proprietor has to collect the sales tax.
Okay, all right, gotcha. So, seven and three-quarters, unless they have a medical certificate.
Correct.
Use tax, did that come from the city?
The use tax is a state, well, let me go back. A 1% or 1 cent of the state sales and use tax goes to the city. So, 1% of that seven and three-quarters.
Got you. And the excise tax?
Excise tax was adopted with Prop 64. That's 15%.
Based on what? Sale, how much the sales price is?
Yes.
Retail sales.
Retail sales.
Retail sales.
Yes.
On both medicinal and recreation.
Got you.
So, we're looking at a minimum of at least 22%.
Correct.
Not count plus-plus.
Yeah, now we got that.
Plus, there's a weight-based cultivation tax.
That the cultivators will, of course, pass on to the distributors and the retail.
The cultivators pay that through the distributors. But to the consumer, that's also a cost. So, you're up in the 28% range in total tax burden?
So, okay, so if you buy $100 worth of product, you're going to be paying $28 minimum for taxes.
Correct.
And the city's only going to get 1%?
That's correct.
Unless they add an additional tax on it.
Got you.
So, the city has two possible sources of revenue associated with these types of businesses. The first of those are administrative fees, or cost recovery fees. Those are the same kinds of application fees and business license fees that you can assess on any type of business within your jurisdiction. Those generally only recover your costs. The second option that you have is to get a voter-approved excise tax adopted. And if you'll recall, we also laid out some models for how those are applied to various types of cannabis industry. Some of those are based on gross sales. Others are based on a square footage basis. You can also levy them on the weight of the product cultivated. We don't recommend that, but, yeah.
Gross sales is easiest to...
All right, thank you. I have more questions, but I'm going to wait because I want to talk about buffer zones. But you stopped prior to getting to that point.
Yeah. And I can put that slide up next.
Well, I'll wait for it, in case other council members have questions prior to that.
Does anyone else have any other questions? I do have one. You mentioned the delivery, and you said you'll go into kind of administration and how, well, if there were to be a delivery business, how would that account for fees? Is it if it's delivered in Daly City, or, I mean, is the, or the delivery business is in Daly City? I'm trying to...
So, there's two options that you have. You could say, we are going to allow delivery-based businesses to locate in Daly City and deliver cannabis products to both our residents and residents or outside of our jurisdiction. That's one option. The second option would be to say, no, we're not going to have any brick-and-mortar building or facility for the sale or delivery of cannabis in our jurisdiction. However, we will allow it to be delivered from outside of our community to consumers in our city. You can...
Do a point-of-sale tax?
You could do a permit and establish an annual fee for the permit. It is more difficult to collect a point-of-sale-based type of application.
Especially when everything's cash.
Correct.
And hard to keep track of it.
Not impossible, more difficult and costly to administer.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, the next slide we have shows the 600-foot radius. Those are indicated in green. And I believe...
The dark green or the light green, or all of the green?
The dark green is the actual shape of the facility.
Ah.
It's covered under state law. And then, the lighter green shows the application of the 600-foot radius around that facility. And as you can see, this excludes quite a bit of the area within the city. The salmon or pink-colored area, I believe, are your commercial zones.
The, it's so small, and so much is covered up, it's kind of hard to tell what's what. Can you show us a little bit, or maybe pat-pat?
I'm not as good about the local geography here.
So... Maybe we start at the top there?
So, at the very top, we're talking, we're talking about John Daly Boulevard.
The horizontal there, right, or kind of diagonally?
Yeah, right there. So, that'd be, this would be around John Daly Boulevard. This would be out Bay Shore area.
Yeah. Where's Mission? Where's Mission Street?
This would be Mission Street, right here. This would be down in the Sarmani kind of area. Yeah. This would be like around King Plaza, that area. And that would be Westlake. Does that give you better orientation? Now, it's limited because of the 600-foot radius. So in each of those areas, there's much more commercial, but particularly, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to bet in your eye.
Blinded the consultant.
He's going to look down.
You know, we have the schools, we have churches, we have a lot of things that are within those, that 600-foot radius in many of the commercial districts. So that's what limits the locations that...
Is that delineated on there? Is it delineated on there where those sites are?
The various colors are delineated right here. You have it in front of you, so that tells you what each of those areas are.
Can somebody read them?
The chart is extremely small on our, if you look at it, there's no way to read that.
The light green means it's the 600 feet, right? The dark green means it's the actual building itself or the schoolyard, the property. So it would be like the whole schoolyard and building. And then the pink is the commercial area. Right. But what is it around? What are the sensitive areas? What is that list? Schools, all kinds of schools? Private, public?
I'll say, we took a number of looks. We took schools, parks, and daycare facilities. So those were the uses that were in the state regulations that we identified.
So we didn't... So say it again? It's all schools?
All schools, daycare facilities, preschools, and parks.
And parks. I don't think too many daycare kids are going to be trying to toke up, but... Okay, parks.
But is that notated on this map? Those schools, the parks on...
No, we didn't make a list of what those are, and that could be provided. We took a very conservative interpretation of the state code. The state code didn't give a very specific list of uses. It just said schools and uses that serve children.
We certainly could take this map, and we could tell you which parks and schools are in all those...
I can see Marchbank Park on there because of the shape of it.
Because it's just a Daly City map, so we know which one of the schools and daycare centers and each of those facilities are.
And actually, that main line that you said was Mission Street is actually the freeway in Geneva.
The freeway is in the middle.
Because I can see Marchbank Park and Jefferson High School there.
So up here...
And Mission is over there, yeah.
Right here, this is Mission. And it's, you see all that green because of the high school, because there's a daycare facility there.
Yeah, park.
Yeah.
As you move forward, you're going to definitely break that down into various different areas.
If it just had a few streets on it, I think it'd be easier for all of us to see where we are, but yeah.
So one of the challenges that arises when you look at this map is then ensuring that if the council made a decision that you were interested in moving forward is identifying the distribution of these kinds of retail outlets around the community and to ensure that they're not concentrated in any particular location. And, you know, there are areas that have more of the green because there are more, there are schools, daycare, other things that limit the number of locations that would make it appropriate. There's other areas where there's much more commercial that potentially could cite those locations, but then the question is, do you really want to concentrate that kind of activity with more than one retail outlet in those particular areas? So those would be some of the questions that you'd have to ask going forward.
I know that certainly the concern of the people in my neighborhood, which is east of the freeway and the poorer side of town, is if the city goes ahead and decides to have dispensaries, we'll do our fair share, but we are not taking the brunt of the burden. So we'll take the number two dispensary, the second one, not the first one. And I look at all those other neighborhoods, looks like there's plenty of room in other places. They can have the first and the third, or however many the council or the community decides they want to have. But I know that there's, even among people who totally support having dispensaries in Daly City, they don't want them targeted for the poorest neighborhoods in Daly City. That goes for the Bay Shore, too. Quite a few people there actually support having one, but not just there and not just on Mission Street.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Christensen. There are different socioeconomic areas within Daly City. I just want to mention that I think, you know, I grew up in the area that you've mentioned, and I think there's ways to describe the neighborhoods. And so I just wanted to let you know that describing neighborhoods as poor or not poor, there's definitely different socioeconomic areas within Daly City.
I have a question, Madam.
Regarding the potential for revenue for Daly City, I would be interested in learning
or getting some kind of breakdown as to, with respect to the categories that were listed, for example, cultivation or delivery or dispensary, manufacturing. I'd like to know what is the breakdown in terms of the potential for revenue? What's the, what's the most generating to what's the least generating? So I can have an idea of where, when we try to make the determination of where do we balance revenue versus some of the good and bad of opening up some of these categories in our city? I'm interested in knowing that breakdown.
We certainly can provide that. It would be very difficult, if not impossible, to have manufacturing and cultivation in Daly City because we really don't have...
The space.
The space for it. So really, when you look at the various options, you know, we could tell you what potentially the kind of revenue, but the likelihood that we would be able to locate any of those kinds of activities in Daly City other than probably retail is very, very minimal. I mean, unlikely that you could have any other kind of distribution other than retail.
So we can pretty much cross out manufacturing and cultivation?
Pretty much, yes.
And unless there are cultivation facilities or manufacturing facilities within close proximity to Daly City, it's unlikely that a testing lab would be in great demand.
Right, a testing lab as well.
So we can cross that out, too, the testing. Okay.
And it's likely, well, I don't know. I was going to say it's likely that those activities might have higher revenue generation.
Certainly, the manufacturing aspect, I think, has the highest potential for revenue. It also has unique space requirements and size of space requirements to produce those revenues. And depending on the size of the cultivation and type of facility, it also can sometimes be a significant revenue producer as well. Testing labs, generally not a great source of revenue. And retail, we've talked about that a little bit. There's a great deal of variability, a wide range of revenues that we see coming in from various types of retail businesses. Depends on the types of products that they are selling, their location, the marketing that they do, the experience of the business owners.
Access to transportation.
Access to transportation, and whether they can be successful in drawing in customers from outside the local jurisdiction.
Let me go back to the manufacturing and cultivation issue. The manufacturing, and I'm just trying to educate myself on how this is done. Can the manufacturing be done in a closed sort of warehouse environment where nothing can be seen?
Yes.
Yes, that's where it generally happens.
Okay. So if we had the space, this could happen, the opening up a huge warehouse and nobody knows it's there?
But they're not growing stuff in it.
Yeah, they're just...
Correct.
They're just processing it. They bring it from some other place where it's cultivated, and then they process and package it.
There are a number of different types of manufacturing, also from the extraction process, which a lot of people think is manufacturing where they're taking the trim.
Where they're taking the trim product and extracting the oils, but there's also manufacturing where they're taking the oil from an extraction process and then manufacturing the edibles or the juices or the other types of products or the vapes and those type of things. So there's various different sizes of manufacturing, from the very large extraction type to the smaller, more boutique type, making edibles or chocolates and those type of things.
Gummy worms or whatever.
They can't do that anymore because they can't make candy, but they can make chocolates or they can make baked goods.
But an oral, rather than smoking.
Those type of things. And so manufacturing is maturing as the industry matures, so there could be some smaller boutique-type manufacturings that could fit into a smaller manufacturing space than a large extraction-type thing, so that's...
What kind of space are we talking about, do you think?
I think that the one in Santa Rosa, I think, was 135,000 square feet or something like that, a very large manufacturing. But it's also located in a semi-industrial area, so from the outside, there's no indication that it's operating until you actually, and even when you walk through the doors, which are secured, there's no indication until you actually get into the back rooms of it where you're actually seeing the processes. But it could come down to a small facility, even this size might, I mean, for a small boutique-type operation who's making just a small, one of the areas within that larger complex is room this size where they were basically doing infused chocolates and edible-type products in a separate location.
And that would fall under manufacturing?
Yeah, that would fall under manufacturing, yes.
And currently in Daly City, the available locations, depending upon the size, the likelihood is that it would be located in the Bay Shore area, in that light industrial area that we have off of Geneva Avenue. And there is very limited warehousing now, but that would be the location where that kind of space would be available.
Okay, the next slide, and our final slide, is if the council decided to move forward and authorize some or any of the commercial cannabis business licenses, and you wanted to issue those licenses by January 1 of 2019, this is a very, very preliminary calendar. And we put all kinds of qualifications on that, that we did our best to establish a preliminary calendar, and it'd be subject to working with you, the council, and your staff, and your city attorney to come up with a final schedule and craft the necessary regulations and ordinances. But the initial step in determining the number and types of businesses, taking a look at your zoning maps, and that would include the buffer zones. So going back to City Manager Martel's comments about determining where and how many is an important step in the process. And then that would give us enough information to begin to craft, draft ordinances and regulations for those business types and to provide you with some recommendations for how to control their location and their numbers and their proximity to each other. Then we would complete a resource study. This is sometimes called a cost recovery study, where we look at the cost of administering a commercial cannabis program that the city would incur, and then develop recommendations for fees to recover those costs. Then we would come to you with a discussion around tax and fee policies. Do you want full-cost recovery fees? Or do you want to make it easier for the businesses to establish in your community? Do you want to adopt an excise tax in addition to those many, you know, local and state taxes that are already there? And if so, what would that tax rate be? And we talked a little bit about some of the options around those kinds of taxes. If you do decide to go forward with a tax, then we have some deadlines we have to meet in order to qualify those for the November ballot.
And this, that particular issue is an important one, which is why tonight we really wanted to solicit some direction about how we should begin to proceed for you because assuming the August 10 deadline for filing the necessary language, ballot language for a cannabis ballot measure on the November ballot, between now and August 10, you have four regularly scheduled council meetings to take action, June 11th and 25th, and July 9th and 23rd, because you would have to have it approved and ready to go by August 10. So it would have to be in July that you would take final action. So you're really not, you're talking about a couple of months in order to get everything, you know, lined up at least for the ballot measure. And that would require working on all of the items that are listed there, the things that are subsequent to the ballot measure, you know, you don't have to worry about as much. But the things that you have to get ready to put on the ballot would be the most important things that the staff needs to get direction on as soon as possible to begin to craft all of that language and get things ready before that August 10 deadline.
So following that decision about the ballot measure and developing the language, then we have some time to develop an application process. And this is something that, depending on the type of business, you'd want specific questions and information provided by the applicant in order to determine their qualifications, know where their proposed location is, whether they have ownership or permission from the landowner to host a cannabis-oriented business at that location. We're going to do a criminal background check on those applicants, as well as a financial background check on those applicants. All of those kinds of things would be covered in an application process. We also recommend that you develop an objective and merit-based selection process. Why do we recommend that? Oftentimes, we'll see cities say, we only want two dispensaries in our community, okay? And that's fine.
Which you do.
But you get 10 applications. And unless you've developed an objective merit-based selection process, you're going to have to back up and do that if you get those 10.
That sounds like lawsuit time.
That's what we want to avoid. And then following that, we'll need a month or so to begin the administration of the selection process, to go ahead and do all those background investigations, in-person interviews, onsite inspections, and complete the selection process and make recommendations back to the council for those permits that should be awarded. So we've given you a lot of information tonight. I know what it feels like to sit in your chairs and be at this point in the meeting. So at this point, I think we'll turn it back over to Pat and the staff to kind of lead you through these decisions this evening. And of course, Larry and I are available for any questions that you have about any of the information we've shared with you tonight or any of the other public sessions we've conducted. or any of the other public sessions we've conducted.
Thank you very much. Any more questions, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, okay, as I made mention before, when we got to the maps, I had some questions on the buffer zones. I heard from.
Can we go back to the map? Oh, I'm sorry.
As a city, do we have to accommodate what state is recommending as a 600-foot buffer zone? Can we increase it to 1,000?
Yes, you have the flexibility as a local jurisdiction to incorporate larger buffer zones. The note of caution that I give to you at this point is you can see those green, you know, blobs on the map, and if you extend it another 400 feet, say, to 1,000 feet, you're not going to have very much of that pink or salmon colored left in your city.
Well, what I'm hearing is the pink or salmon represents where these locations can be established, because they're identified as retail areas presently?
Commercial, yes.
Also heard through the state that this map represents protected areas such as churches and schools.
Not churches.
Not churches, only schools. Schools, child development centers, parks.
Can we modify the ordinance to include churches, banks?
You can, you have that flexibility as a local jurisdiction.
Thank you. On the map, I would like to see an overlay of transit routes into Daly City to include Bart and Sam trans routes. And lastly, this talk of putting together a ballot, now, a ballot would go out to the voters of Daly City based upon what the council decides as recommendations. What if the voters of Daly City say no? Then even though it's state law that the voters throughout the state already approved Prop 64, we, as a city, can say, based upon the votes from our residents, that we will not have a cannabis outlet recreation from recreation or medical use, then we will be okay?
Yes, you can ban it, but it doesn't mean that people can't use it, that they can't buy it elsewhere.
Oh, yeah, well, I know that.
They could not have it delivered, it's just that you would not want to have retail outlets in the city. You could do that.
Right, because we have the land use control, but not the law.
Just as a point of clarification, that would not require that you place anything on the ballot.
Right.
The city council has that authority to implement a more permanent ban on the cannabis industry, just through a legislative action that you could take.
And that's one of the options, in terms of direction, that we're going to be soliciting from you, that that's one of your choices. You can say, "Nope, I'm not convinced, and I want to think about banning it completely." And then we wouldn't go to the voters. But you could get a negative vote at the ballot box, and that would give you the message that banning it is what people would want.
Thank you.
I know, I had talked to the city attorney earlier about, I'm very uncomfortable with four or five people making this decision for the entire city. So could we craft a ballot measure that would say, "Yes, we want dispensaries," we could even have a number of them, or "No, we don't want dispensing," however you want to word it, it's probably best in the affirmative so that people can understand what a yes is, yes is for the dispensaries and no is for no dispensaries, that we would craft in that language however many, we'd put a limit on however many or unlimited, whatever the council would decide, and list the types of businesses, and we can include the amount of local sales tax and have it all in one measure that people would, that community would either vote yes or no on, and then we'd really know the feelings of our community. I know that at those meetings, that a lot of those people were interested in the business themselves, so, and we had non-residents there in a fairly large number and not very many residents, so what do our people believe?
Do we have an analysis, I know this went to the voters in the past in Samhale County, and can, do we have an analysis of what the voters in Daly City specifically, I'm sure we could get that data, right?
So are you talking about the statewide ballot?
Yes.
Well, we actually showed that to you in the first presentation, I think it was 56%?
I don't recall the exact percentage, we can look that up for you and get it.
I think it was 56%. It wasn't a huge majority, but it was a majority, yeah. But we can get that information.
Okay, thank you.
And I think Councilmember Christensen, yes, you could craft that type of combined ballot measure that would say, shall the city of Daly City adopt up to a 10% excise tax on cannabis industries and permit up to three retail dispensaries or three medicinal dispensaries, however you wanted to incorporate the language. I think essentially what you would be doing then is putting it to the voters to determine, do they want dispensaries in the city or not? If they don't, then the tax would fail as well.
And so we would still have to do all those, we'd have to do a lot of work to determine what it is we would want to include in that ballot measure. We want to give people the opportunity to vote, but we also want to have something defined enough so that whichever way they vote, we know what it is that they actually want.
So I think my feeling on this is that, you know, the state law, which was passed, allows for the use of cannabis, and we, as the council, have a certain amount of authority, legislative authority, to implement whatever we think is in the best interest of the city. So I'm not sure that, for example, I'm not sure we should ask the voters to limit the number of dispensaries, because I think as time goes on, things change, and we might decide to have more because of the success of it, because it's perhaps something that the community really wants and it benefits the community. So I'm not sure that we should limit, put limits on our ability to regulate as a council what is already the state law, which is people can use cannabis. I guess my question is, with respect to the retail or the dispensaries of it, is that something that we, as a council, can do without a vote?
Yes, the council can establish the ordinance that allows for the citing of retail establishments. It would be all of the tax-related increases associated with that, that the voters would have to approve.
Yeah, so my feeling is that, I think because the state law is the law, that I think if we do a ballot measure, it should just be on what kind of tax rate we want to implement to get the best amount of revenue for our city. And I think it's cleaner that way, I think it, you know, we've already done this, clearly over 50, what, 56% of the voters approve of the use of cannabis, the polling or the study that you guys have done, the community outreach, already is compelling that the numbers were that, for the most, most of the participants, they wanted. So that's my thought. I think the ballot measure should just focus on how much we are to gain, what rate we are to use, and that's it.
I'd like to also, I know this is an analysis around, you know, our community outreach, and I thank you for taking the time and, you know, reaching out to community members and providing us the data. But I also like to know, kind of, as time progresses, I'm sure that there have been changes around jurisdictions around us and within the county or the Bay Area, and can we get, what is the updated ordinances within other jurisdictions?
I think we're having an earthquake.
Yep.
Yes, we are. Okay.
Just a little one.
None of us did what we were supposed to do.
Moving on. Moving on, that was just a minor one.
If we do, yeah.
Never seen the screen move like that before.
That was definitely an earthquake.
So we can provide information about cities that have approved ordinances, yes.
Appreciate that.
And Pacifica, I think, is the, our closest one.
The closest one, yeah.
It is the closest, I mean, I'm sure there's other comparable sites.
It is for medicinal outlets.
Yeah, but as far as, I'd just like to see a gamut, not necessarily just the closest cities to us of, you know, what has been proposed. And then, for me, I think, you know, that's why I wanted to know the statistics on what the voters' actual percentage was when this was brought to them, and it was, yeah, passed through state, and Daly City is 56%. And for me, I think if we were to move forward with any ballot measure, it would be finding the, as mentioned by the vice mayor, the right amount that would benefit our city, but at the same time, you know, you know, these are going to be local businesses, so that there's a balance and finding that right number, so.
So if you're going to get information from other cities, maybe take some of Councilmember Sylvester's questions and kind of combine that. He wanted to see an overlay of the transit routes, but also to analyze some of those nearby operations, what their transit routes look like, so we can sort of do an apples-to-apples comparison of, have they been successful? Because it sounds like we've got some support here for dealing with the tax aspect of it, but, and some positive about going forward in that direction, but I think we want to definitely, if you're looking at tax money, we want to definitely see the success of these businesses and what, where they were located, any other thing else that affected their success, to see if we have that here or not. I still think we should go to the voters over it, but.
Well, my guess is that we probably, I mean, we could probably get you, I know we could get the information about other jurisdictions who have approved ordinances, whether or not we could have sufficient data about how successful they've been today.
Yeah.
Not sure that there's going to be enough data to provide anything meaningful to you.
Yeah, that's probably true.
Except for medicinal dispensaries, you might be able to, but not for purely retail under Prop 64, there's just not been enough time to be able to tell you that.
And even with the state sales and use tax, unless there are three or more outlets in the same retail category, we cannot share the sales tax data.
Information, huh?
Correct.
Didn't know that.
So there needs to be at least three?
Yeah, sales tax information is proprietary and.
Correct.
Because if it's any less than three, then you can figure out how much money people are making on an individual basis.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, okay, I get it.
If I can make a final note, that's information, I kind of agree with some of what my colleagues are saying, I am in firm belief that if the voters pass the initiative, then they want it, but at the same time, we, as a council, have to be aware of what our actual community wants. I, again, as the mayor said, this was a start in performing community outreach, and this helps us and guides us to make the decision. Now, the reason why I'd ask for the transit routes, because I'm thinking of public safety also, and, you know, crimes are perpetrated or could be perpetrated at these locations if they have access to transit, or if they want to come into Daly City and buy and get on transit and go back. I'm looking at public safety as a matter, and it should not be, even though we need the money, it should not be solely upon how much we're going to make out of this by allowing something that a lot of folks may not even want. So, you know, again, there'll be a balancing and weighing scale to look at it, and to have all the information that we can possibly get, that would be great.
Well, I think the one statement that you just made is an absolute truism, Councilmember, because I think our consultants were very direct with you in the very first presentation that they made about the entire process of implementation, and that is that no city should be undertaking this as a revenue generating activity. There may be some revenue that is generated in excess of the cost of administering these programs and providing public safety, but if we're looking at this kind of activity as solving our structural budget deficit, it's not going to do that.
Absolutely.
And we should not be approaching it that way. You know, one of the things we did emphasize, though, and so in terms of increasing the tax associated with this kind of activity, what we talked to those who were at the meetings, the informational meetings, about was that the voters of Daly City should expect that if the council does approve the locating of retail establishments like this, that it should not be, have an impact on tax revenue that is generated for community services. It should be revenue that is generated above and beyond that. And everyone at those meetings was very much in agreement that this should not in any way be impacting the city's existing revenues and recognizing that our existing revenues are falling short of what we would like them to be. So if you are going to pursue this, then raising the necessary tax revenue to support the administration of this program is very important, but counting on that on an annual basis is producing a huge amount of revenue that's going to help support additional services, it may or may not happen. So, based on what I have heard in the notes I've taken, we can certainly come back at the next meeting and provide you with the details that you've asked about. Is there anything else that you would like us to be able to produce to assist with you? Is there anything else that you would like us to be able to produce to assist with your deliberations at a future meeting about the direction that you'd like to move in? And I guess I want to make sure that I've heard from at least four of you tonight that there is an interest in proceeding forward with at least gathering information that would be required if you were to provide direction to staff that moving ahead with implementation of retail establishments in Daly City is what you are interested in doing.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we definitely need more information.
So I'm not hearing anyone say no. I'm hearing a majority say yes. Okay, just want to--
And we need more information before we make a final decision.
Clarification. Oh, absolutely. Doesn't mean you've acted. I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm getting it correctly, that there is a majority vote here-- or direction, rather, majority direction to move ahead.
To gather more information, yeah. And I'm not convinced that I support the churches and banks' idea of adding them to it, but I think we should look at it. And I don't know what-- if you guys had any additional or feelings about the sensitive sites.
It's a good point. So Mr. Cohen and I were just chatting, and one of the things he raised is something that you may want to consider. And if you want us to get additional information, we can. But this would be an opportunity for you to also consider that even though we've had a moratorium or a ban in the past for medicinal dispensaries, do you want to consider medicinal dispensaries in addition to retail adult recreational use?
Usually, the way-- I think the more conservative approach would be medicinal only. And then if you wanted a broader policy, it would be to open it to adult use and medicinal use dispensaries.
I'd like to give-- well, my feeling is top priority to medicinal use. I am no physician, and if a doctor prescribes the use of cannabis for his or her patient, who am I to say that they should not do so? So I would say at a minimum, a higher priority for me would be the medicinal use.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I would like to see the analysis of what I asked for earlier around other jurisdictions, around what was medicinal and recreational. I need that information. Thank you.
I would like to see the-- the-- I don't know, the-- the-- some of the high-end ones that are opening up in San Francisco, the-- I'd like to see-- get a sense of what they're like and so--
Are you suggesting a field trip?
Well, we have done that in the past. If you wanted to do a field trip, we could arrange that.
I mean, maybe, because what I've heard is that there are some really--
Medicinal dispensaries.
--nice ones that look very modern, very clean, and I would like to actually see something, and so I can-- it'll help me make the decision. So maybe some kind of presentation or maybe a field trip. I don't know. You'll come with us?
Well, when the council did consider medicinal dispensaries, we actually did-- the city attorney and I did take a field trip with a couple of the council members to look at a couple of the facilities, to see the kind of security they have, the kind of in-store use of the product, what kinds of products they sold, other-- you know, edibles and other kinds of cannabis oil products. So we did visit a couple of dispensaries in San Francisco in order to have a better understanding of what these facilities would be like and what they would look like from the outside if the public were walking by.
Absolutely.
So we could certainly do that.
I'd say that most of those started as medicinal dispensaries and now have converted or added adult use permits and now operate as both medicinal and adult-use retail outlets. And we'd be happy to work with the city to arrange those tours. We've done that for several different city jurisdictions and visited a variety of cannabis industry categories and examples.
Yeah, one of the other things we point out to cities that move forward is that your ordinances, if you move forward, should be flexible and broad enough to take into consideration the change that's going to happen in the industry over the years, so you're not tied within-- your hands aren't tied initially, so you can actually modify and revise your regulations as you move forward to address any impacts, either positive or negative, as the industry grows. So we encourage, so you don't have to make a decision now and then be stuck with it forever, that you have some flexibility within that ordinance and regulations.
All right, okay.
Any other feedback?
No.
Okay, so we will plan to come back in June with this additional information and an opportunity for the council to have some discussion about it. And if-- we'll agendize it with potential action. If the council decides at that time that you still want to deliberate further, then we can continue the item at that time. But we'll agendize it in a way that if you wanted to take action and give direction to staff, you could do so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martel, and thank you, Mr. Cohen and Mr. Bergkamp.
Thanks.
Thank you.
This is now adjourned.